Twenty-one redistricting process. We're going to provide an overview of the redistricting process. We're going to review communities of interest and supervisory boundary mapping proposals that have been submitted by the public. We're going to provide over and under population data. We're going to review the criteria for adopting district maps. We're going to present several concept drafts of possible supervisory boundary maps. We're going to receive input from the public and then we're going to receive direct, we're going to give direction from the Board of Supervisors. This is an evening meeting as required by the state during, for this process. And so I'm glad to see, hopefully, we've got some people that aren't usually able to join a board meeting, joining us this evening. Welcome if this is your first meeting. I'm going to open up the public hearing and ask David to provide an overview. But I do want to let people know that we didn't finish all of our agenda items for our board meeting this afternoon. So, once this hearing is complete, we will take up the rest of the agenda items as we move forward. And then I'm going to ask county council if there was anything to report out from closed session.
There is not. Thank you Chair Burgess.
Thank you. I do remember eventually. So I'll open up the public hearing and I'm going to ask Mr. Toal to provide an interview, an overview.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Supervisors. As you indicated, this is the required public hearing that has to be held in the evenings after 6:00 PM. And by starting it at 6:15, we are meeting that criteria. Just a real quick reminder, the redistricting is necessary every 10 years. The Board last redistricted in 2011. And the Board is the responsible party for drawing the supervisory districts in Contra Costa County. That has to be done using the official US Census data, which was released on September 20th of this year. In a normal year, we would have anticipated that we would have received that data in April. But because we did not receive it until September 20th, we are on a very tight timeline in order to get through the redistricting process. So we have a number of public hearings and we've done our best to have a robust public outreach with it. This is the current map in terms of supervisory districts. Based on this map, essentially, obviously, our goal always is to create districts that are substantially equal in population. But the law recognizes that there are many reasons why some deviation in population between districts will occur in order to meet all of the federal and state legal requirements, including the California Fair Maps Act, requirements such as respecting the geographic integrity of an area or of a specific local community of interest. Because of this, a deviation of plus or minus 5% is generally acceptable as long as other legal requirements are met. The current deviation range between the largest plus deviation in District 2 of 4.35% and the largest minus deviation of minus 3.56% in District 1, as shown on this map, is a total of 7.91. This is within the 10% deviation limit that is allowed by law and so forth. It meets all of the legal requirements. As I indicated, we have tried to do a robust public outreach. We have a subscription system whereby anybody who would like to be a subscriber to our redistricting materials can go on our dedicated redistricting website, which is cocoredistricting.org, and can sign up. And we will then send you all of the information as it's developed and publicized. We also have, as I said, the dedicated redistricting website, and we've had reviews of over 4,100 people there. And we're coming close to now having 100,000 in terms of Twitter and Nextdoor posts. There is a complete redistricting communication report that is available, was attached to this October 19th public hearing, the board meeting. As I indicated, we're having a number of hearings, but they have been condensed again to meet the requirement that we did not receive the data until September 20th. Our first one was in August. We had one two weeks ago on August 5th, and of course, we're having the one this evening. Starting on Saturday, we will have a series of district workshops, and I'll describe those in a little more detail in a moment. And then we have two more public hearings scheduled, one on November 9th and one on November 23rd. The goal would be to arrive at a final map that the Board could approve at that November 23rd meeting. The purpose of that is in order to meet the statutory deadlines of December 15th. If we have to go beyond that November 23rd date, we would still have the opportunity to have a meeting early in December. But that puts a lot of pressure on the clerk recorder's office because of the statutory deadlines that she must meet as well as ours. As I indicated, we have a schedule of the supervisor workshops, starting on Saturday. The first one will be at 9:00 AM at the San Ramon City Hall. Each of the workshops will be hosted by the supervisor from that district. And essentially, keep in mind though, that although we will, we will host it by the supervisor and talk about concerns for the redistricting in that particular area, this is open to the public from wherever, not just that district, but certainly countywide or from other locations as well. So we will have ones on Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. We also had three community online workshops. And essentially, those were technical workshops intended for the public to learn how the online mapping application works and gave them an opportunity to learn how to submit suggestions for community of interest or for supervisory district maps. There were two of them in English. The first one was conducted on September 15th and a second one on October 14th. There was also one workshop conducted in Spanish, and that was conducted on October 13th. More information on those community online workshops is available at our redistricting website. And also, there was a video made of each of those, and that is also on our website. Individuals who would be interested in looking at that, there was an explanation throughout the online workshop in terms of how to use the redistricting process for the county. So people who are still interested in drawing more maps would find that, I think, very helpful. As I indicated, we have California law requires some very mandatory requirements, not just the mandatory to complete it by December 15th, but we were required to have a minimum number of hearings. We are also required to have an evening meeting, as the supervisor mentioned, of course, is the one we're having this evening. And of course, the public hearings had to be at a fixed time regardless of other agenda items. So, the good news is the stat, the process that we have established, it meets all of the legal requirements to comply with the California mandatory requirements. California also requires, through their Fair Maps Act, what's called ranked priorities. And that is, to the extent practical supervisor districts, first of all, have to be geographically contiguous. All the maps that we have seen drawn so far by the public, as well as the concept maps that we are proposing for the Board to look at tonight, all meet that requirement. Probably the most significant one, of course, is the geographic integrity of a local community or community of interest has to be respected. And that's been the focus of much of the activity is around it. There are other ranked priorities, for example, geographic integrity of a city. But you will note that that says to the extent practicable. In Contra Costa County, since we have a number of large cities, it is very difficult to have one supervisor represent just a single city, as you will see by a number of the maps that have been proposed, not only by the public, but also the ones that we will be discussing this evening. The community of interest is specifically described in the statute. It is a population that shares common social or economic interests in order for those to be included within a single district for the purpose of representation. But having said that, the statute also says a community of interest can be almost anything. It simply has to be identifiable by a specific geographic area. So here are some examples of communities of interest, urban or rural interest, housing patterns, community centers, school districts or school attendance areas, as well as city boundaries or policy issues, whether it's crime, education, employment, or economic patterns. At our dedicated redistricting website, we have a substantial listing of other examples of community interest. So if anybody is interested in seeing something, they can take a look at that. As I indicated, we have to use the California Official Redistricting Database that's responsible for the redistricting, and that was released on September 20th. So, we're bound by that time, in addition to that, under the Fair Maps Act, we were prohibited from, the county releasing any county draft proposals for a seven-day period. So that was until September 27th. And that is why tonight is the first evening meeting, the first public hearing. The Board will see that we've actually drafted some proposals for the Board to consider. The public was able to draft maps as early as August if they wanted to. And they can continue to draft maps or draft communities of interest and submit those for the Board's consideration. If you go to our dedicated redistricting website and you click on the icon that's which is called sharing your communities of interest, or the, there's another icon that says submitting map proposals. If you do that, that will take you to this area of the redistricting, in which if you scroll down, you will come to this submissions gallery. On this is each and every map that's been proposed by the public, as well as proposals for communities of interest or comments. If you click on any one of these icons, it will bring it up in a much larger scale. You can look at it, determine, hmm, is this a map that I like or one that I don't like? You can submit your comments as to each map that you would pull up. You cannot change the data that's in there. So if you are drafting a map, your map cannot be changed by anybody once it is actually submitted and part of the gallery. However, if you don't want to draft a map, you can look at one of these and you might want to say, well, you know, I really like this map. I could support this one. Or you might say, I like this map, but there are some areas here that I think should be readjusted. So, we had five submissions of maps that were considered by the Board at the October 5th meeting. We've had two additional submissions since that time. Both of these were by Mr. Jackson from the Richmond area. Essentially, he has proposed maps, maps that are proposed by the public, we do not make any adjustments on. So, for example, on this one, you will note that the individual has submitted the, if you look at what's district four, that really was what is currently District 2. Now, we don't know whether the individual actually intended to change the representation of a particular district, or whether they simply just put these numbers in for, because it was a lot easier. But we don't change any data or any information that is submitted by a member of the public. Mr. Jackson submitted a second map, and you can see this was, it was another one that, again, made some substantial changes as to the districts. And once again, we're not sure whether that was intentional or not, but we would not make any changes on that. So at this point, we're going to move into the conceptual supervisory maps that we have drawn. At the October 5th second public hearing, the Board discussed areas that might require adjustment of the current supervisory boundaries due to changes in population or to better align the communities of interest. Based on that discussion by the supervisors, as well as public comments, staff has created five conceptual maps of possible supervisory districts for your consideration. All of the draft concepts are posted on our county's dedicated redistricting website and available for people to review. The, there are five maps, but each one is represented twice. Once to show the details of the supervisory district, and the second one to include all of the race and ethnicity data for citizen voting age population, as well as for total population. Those requirements exist under the law, not only the state law, the Fair Maps Act, but also on the Voting Rights Act, the federal legislation. The Voting Rights Act is designed to ensure that any proposed supervisory district map does not discriminate. We believe that each of these proposed concept maps that you will be seeing this evening meet the standards of the Voting Rights Act and do not split racial voting blocks or create discrimination. In a moment, I will ask Chris Howard from the Department of Conservation and Development, GIS Division, to walk us through each of these five concepts. But before that, just what we are going to look for the Board in terms of direction today and for the public comment that we received today is to see if we can narrow the maps down to those that the Board wants us to consider further, so that we can also use that as the focus for the individual supervisory workshops that will be held starting Saturday, and hopefully narrow the options in terms of looking at a final supervisory map. In order to meet the statutory timelines that I've talked about, we would hope to develop concepts for a proposed final map for the supervisors to look at that at the next public hearing, which will be on November 9th. Not asking you to vote on a map at that, at that time, but you would have to give us direction as to what would look like a final map at that November 9th meeting, so that we can bring a proposed final map to you at the November 23rd meeting. Keep in mind, if you make any changes on a proposed final map, we would have to go back out and publish that, because the statutory requirement is very specific in terms of timelines for publication of a final map before it can be voted on by the Board. And again, that's to make sure that the public has plenty of access into that. So with that, I will turn it over to Chris to walk us through the concept maps. And then after that, hopefully, we can get the comments and direction from the Board. Thank you.
Good evening. Oh, sorry.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Board, members of the Board. I'm going to walk you through a couple scenarios here, some concept maps that we came up with by listening to your, your feedback from the last meeting, and also from reading the comments from the public and looking at some of their communities of interest. We've got, each map has two maps. The first map is a detailed map where you get a good, a good feel of all the different communities. And the second map will have a lot more data on it. It'll have a breakdown of race and ethnicity data and, and total population, population variance. But I felt like it would be a little bit better to start with the detailed map and go through the different communities and which districts they're in. And then we'll look at the other map. This is concept map one. I'm going to start in West County and move in a counterclockwise direction. And I think that will be the best way to tackle these maps. So I'm going to start up here in Pinole. The first change, big change that we made here is, Pinole has, has moved completely into District 1 in this concept map. And it was, it was a 1% variance above the equal population. And that was a pretty good, clean, clean District 1. As we move to the southeast here, I'm going to focus on the community of Reliz Valley, which is tucked in between Lafayette, Pleasant Hill, and Martinez and Alhambra Valley. This, this is a tricky area as it has three different spheres of influence cover it, three different school districts cover it, but not in the same breakdown. So it can get pretty complex. This map has this area divided by school district, school district primarily, with the Lafayette School Districts in District 2, the Martinez School Districts in District 5, and the Mount Diablo Unified School Districts in District 4. Next, we're going to go down to the area of Walnut Creek. And this includes lots of unincorporated areas in the sphere of influence of Walnut Creek, such as Ocalanas Ridge CDP, Castle Hill CDP, and Saranap CDP, which is actually split between Walnut Creek's SOI and Lafayette's SOI. In this, in this map, we've put the entirety of the city of Walnut Creek in District 4 and all the areas of unincorporated county in their sphere of influence. So, Ocalanas Ridge, Castle Hill, and half of Saranap, the half that's in Walnut Creek SOI. The half that's in the Lafayette SOI will remain in District 2. As we continue to go to the southeast, the San Ramon Valley, the communities of Diablo, Black Hawk, Camino Tassahara, and the Tassahara Valley itself, these have been moved into District 2 from District 3. You'll notice in some of the rural areas that the old boundaries, which are shown here in yellow, have been moved. And you might say, oh, well, why did we do that? Well, the census geography, which we have to use to, to create these lines, it has moved in this area. So some of the lines that we used in 2011 don't exist anymore in the census geography. So that's one of the reasons why there have been adjustments out in some of the rural areas. As we circle around to the northeast, Antioch, which was previously split by this yellow line, has a few changes. First of all, in 2018, this, this little area here was annexed into the city of Pittsburgh. So that will join Pittsburgh in District 5. And then in this map, we have the, the split of Antioch, instead of following Highway 4, Cavala Road, and East 18th Street, it follows the Union Pacific Railroad to the city limit at, at Highway 160. Finally, as we circled to the north, this, in this map, the city of Concord has been split. It's been split here at the freeway of 680, and then along Concord Boulevard to Willow Pass Road, and following that back up to Highway 4. So you'll notice Buchanan Airport is in District 5 in this, in this map. And the former Concord Naval Weapons Station is split between District 5 and District 4. Also, the downtown area of Concord is, is kind of split between District 5 and District 4. I'm going to move on to the second map in the series to show you, the map is the same, but here we can, we can look at the total population for each district, the variance from equal distribution, and then the percent. And you'll notice in here, District 2 is the high district at 4.9. District 3 is the low district at negative 2.55, for a total population variance of 7.45, which is under the 10% guideline. Over here on the right, we've got the, the total population breakdown by race and ethnicity, as well as the citizen voting age population breakdown by race and ethnicity. Does anyone have any questions before I move on to the next map? All right. Here is map, concept map two. We're going to go around a little bit more quickly, because a lot of these are the same as the last map. Pinole goes to District 1. Reliz Valley is split by the school district. In, in this map, the Walnut Creek's Creek split is different. In, in this case, we're going to include the Ocalanas Ridge CDP in District 4, and then have the Walnut Creek split along Highway 24 and Interstate 680, with the entirety of the CDP of Saranap and the entirety of the CDP of Castle Hill in District 2. As we follow around to the southeast, again, the San Ramon Valley goes to District 2. In this map, the Morgan Territory area here of Morgan Territory Road and part of Marsh Creek Road, that falls within the Mount Diablo School District, goes to District 4. So this line here follows the school district line. As we go around to Antioch, the split here is a little bit more complicated. It kind of builds on the stepping stone, step, step ladder here from, from 2011, and follows many intricate roads and, and railroads to get the population distribution pretty even between District 5 and District 3. And then in Concord, the split follows Marsh Drive, Solano Way, and Grant Street, and E Street, which are kind of a busy road, even though the road name changes, it's, it's a thoroughfare. And then it follows Willow Pass Road up to Highway 4. The total variance on this map is 7.66. Again, the full detail of, of data here, District 2 is now the high district with 4.82% and District 5 is the low district of negative 2.84%.
But Chris, on that particular map, the airport remains in District 4?
That is correct. The airport is in District 4 in this map. The, that is true. And here is concept map 3. Again, Pinole in District 1, Reliz Valley by the school district, Walnut Creek at Highway 24 and Interstate 680, San Ramon Valley in District 2, Morgan Territory Road area in District 4. In this case, in Antioch, there's a very minor change right in the area of the railroad, A Street, Alpha Way. And in Concord, again, the airport's in District 4. And this follows the old railway right-of-way, which is kind of divides the neighborhoods off Concord Boulevard over here from the neighborhoods off Solano and Olivera, and Highway 242. And then it follows Olivera to Willow Pass Road and up to Highway 4. There's this little notch here, this is a neighborhood that's on Willow Pass Road that, that stays in District 4. So this follows the Concord Naval Weapons Station around this neighborhood, and then follows Willow Pass Road up to Highway 4. This has got a, a pretty high District 2 again of 4.82, and a low in District 3 of negative 4 for a total variance of 8.82%. Our next map, Pinole in District 1, Reliz Valley by school district, Walnut Creek at Highway 24 and Interstate 680, San Ramon Valley to District 2. In this scenario, Morgan Territory stays in District 3, and the lines around Mount Diablo are based on census geography. In Antioch, this is a big change. The split in Antioch follows Highway 4 until you get to Cavala Road, and then it follows Cavala Road up to Fulton Shipyard Road and, and does a different kind of split in Antioch. And then in Concord, again, the airport's in District 4. It follows the former railroad right-of-way and then cuts through the north end of downtown on Bonifacio Street, and then up Port Chicago Highway to Highway 4. This map has a max, max variance of 4.81 for District 2 and a low of negative 4.11 for District 5, with a total variation of 8.92%. Our final map has Pinole in District 1, Reliz Valley by school district, Walnut Creek at Highway 24 and Interstate 680, the San Ramon Valley in District 2, Mount Diablo adjusted to census geography with Morgan Territory Road in District 3. Antioch is split a little bit wider over by Tuscany Meadows. It's split on Summersville Road until it hits the railroad, and then the railroad to Highway 160. And then in Concord, the split, again, the airport's in District 4, the split follows the old railroad right-of-way and Highway 242, and then Highway 4. This map, this map has a high of 4.81% for District 2 and a low for, of negative 4.87 for District 5, with a total variation of 9.68%. Does anybody have any questions or would like to look at any of these maps in more detail?
Candace has her hand up. So go ahead.
I do, and, and thank you, Chris, for all of your work on this. And having gone in and played around with the maps myself, it's, it's no easy task. And so the, the one question I have in, um, when you're looking at District Two and that sort of crazy Lafayette, um, not Lafayette's not crazy, but where the boundaries are. Um, did you also look at the Akalani's School District? You mentioned the Lafayette Elementary School District, but their high school, Akalani's, there's a whole high school district. And so was that also taken into consideration, if you know?
Yeah, uh, you know, I have been looking at school districts in the Walnut Creek area, and it gets pretty, uh, pretty complicated. There's a portion uh over here by Alamo that's in the San Ramon uh Valley School District. There's a portion here uh in Walnut Creek that's actually in the Lafayette Elementary School District that you can only access from Pleasant Hill Road. So you can only get to it from Lafayette. Uh, you know, and yes, and, and in this area, I, I think it would be too big uh to put all of the Akalana's School Districts in, into District Two. Uh, but there's certainly adjustments that could be made to fine tune for school districts.
And I think we can work on that offline. Um, I don't want to take up a lot of time. That as well as the San Ramon, there is this funny little area, you're right, in, uh, right next to Alamo or one side of the street. It's Alamo, the other side, it's City of Walnut Creek. But both sides of the street are part of the San Ramon Valley Unified School District. So just, yeah, we, offline, let's talk about it and see what those numbers do. But I just, to me, I find um one of the biggest community of interest really is our schools. And so I, as much as we're able to, I really like to keep people within the same school district and particularly even the same high schools in the same district where possible. So that was my one question. Thank you.
Thank you, Candace. Uh, do any of my other, okay, go ahead, Federal. You're muted.
But while he's muted, let me just add one thing, but if you don't mind, Federal. I was just gonna say, um, Kevin Wilk, Mayor of Walnut Creek, did contact me yesterday and indicated that the city of Walnut Creek plans to send a letter to the Board of Supervisors indicating that they like having two supervisors, that they don't want to be divided. So I just thought I would throw that out there and I.
Or they do, they do, they do want to be divided.
They don't, yeah, they enjoy being divided. They got Karen and I had a really good job.
Right. They don't mind being divided. I don't, yeah, that's what Kevin said to me and, and Cindy Silva.
Okay. Go ahead, Federal.
Okay, can you go back to map one?
I sure can.
And, and let's go over District Five again.
Mm-hmm. So in District Five here, the uh Hercules is in District Five, but all of Pinole's in District One. Uh, then it has a community of Briones. Uh, it has a little bit of Relise Valley, the portion that's in Martinez School District here. Uh, and then it's got all of Martinez, uh, including Alhambra Valley, Mountain View, Vine Hill, and Pacheco CDPs. Uh, it's got uh Buchanan Airport, uh, the industrial uh portions between uh Martinez and Concord here. It's got uh a fair bit of North Concord, uh, it's got Clyde, uh, Motco, the Military Ocean Terminal Complex run by the Army, uh, the community of Baypoint, the city of Pittsburgh, uh, the Keller Canyon landfill. This area here is Kirkers Pass Road area. Uh, it follows the city limit of Pittsburgh over here, and then once it hits Antioch, it follows the railroad, the Uni- the Union Pacific Railroad here until it hits the city limits of Oakley at Highway one sixty and follows the city limits up to the one sixty bridge.
Okay, so it's very similar to, to the map that we operate on today with the exception of uh Pinole.
The exception of Pinole, right, yeah. And then maybe the, the split of Concord.
And, and yes, okay. Okay.
Go ahead, John. Are you, wait, were you done, Federal?
Uh, yes.
All right, sorry, I just want to make sure. Thanks. Go ahead, John.
I, I was just gonna make a general comment. I prefer hearing also, commenting further after the speakers. And I realize, um, you know, the, the comments that I made at a previous meeting are um, that the, um, the area of the Tassahara Valley that is in District Three um should be in District Two, and I, and most of the maps have that because that community of interest should be all of the San Ramon Valley together. Um, I do agree with Candace about trying to have school districts. That's another community of interest. It may not always be possible. That's clearly one of them. And I know, um, in the last redistricting, Pinole needed to be split between District Five and District One uh in order to give enough population for District Five to not have uh too great of a deviation. And it is good that that will not be needed now, but Pinole, which is a smaller city, can all be in one district. So that's good. I think these other lines are more gonna be adjustments. Um, and what we're doing here, other than having Pinole be in one district, moving Tassahara uh into all of District Two, really then, then what are the other fine tune, tuning adjustments? Which means some portion of North Concord, right, however that's defined, probably needs to be in District Five to give it enough population. And then where's the line in the east in Antioch between Districts Three and, Three and Five? I mean, it seems to me where the line is in Antioch between Districts Three and Five, where the line is in Concord between Districts Four and Five, and then that will drive also what happens between Districts Two and Four. So just general comments.
Thank you. Uh, my, my comments are, let's see. Um, I believe that Morgan Territory should be with the community of Clayton, and that's uh important. I think, um, Blackhawk, Diablo, Camino, Tassahara should be with the communities of San Ramon and Danville. Uh, I believe that the airport should be in the district that is Concord uh city because that's, there's a big interaction there. Uh, I, um, I, I also believe that the northern waterfront doesn't necessarily have to be in one district, I think. Um, personally, I, I have a lot of, I, interest in water, and so I'm interested in having some of the waterfront. And um, I do find it, after hearing some of the explanations about the school districts, I do think that whatever we can do to make that as uh logical and fair as possible, I think that would be good. So if there's no other public, uh, no other comments from my colleagues.
I'm gonna wait till after the here, until the public speaks.
Okay, I'm going to hand it over to Jamie, and I think we still have pause here.
Yes, we do.
Great. So I'll let you take it over for public comments.
If there are any callers on the line or any Zoom participants who would like to speak on the twenty twenty-one redistricting process, please press pound two if you're on the phone or raise your hand in the Zoom app. If there is any person who wants to make a comment about the discussion of the redistribution of the twenty twenty, please, please, number two, or raise your hand if you are in Zoom. Thank you. We don't have any callers, but we do have a Zoom participant.
Great, thank you. So Derlin, I'm gonna invite you over to be a participant. Please accept the invitation, and now that you're on, please unmute yourself. You'll have two minutes. And uh, you'll hear a tone that'll give you a warning that you have twenty seconds left. Derlin, please unmute yourself. There you go. Welcome.
Hi, uh, my name is Delling. I live in Hercules, and um, I just had one, one question. Uh, the communities are still organizing themselves in this process. I know this is kind of like been last minute based on what you said regarding the, the delivery of census information. But I wanted to know if the maps will continue to be updated as we, as you continue to get feedback.
Thank you, Derlin. Alrighty, um, Mr. Twa, do you want to answer that question? I think that's our only public speaker, by the way.
Madam Chair, yes, as maps are received or comments are made, all of that is online. And uh, and as maps are updated, uh, from, in terms of input from the supervisors or uh concept maps that we would put together, those would be online as well. So we will publish everything as well as every comment. The other thing to keep in mind is that all of this data, both the videos as well as the, the comment cards, everything that we receive will be kept uh on a dedicated website for ten years. So it's gonna be available for, until you get around to the next redistricting.
Thank you, Mr. Twa. Alrighty, so I'm gonna bring this back to my colleagues. Uh, John has raised his hand.
Yeah, yeah, the other comment I wanted to make, and, and if you could put, um, they're all similar. Let's say put up four or five, put up four, just map four for a second. Yeah, so I mean, yeah, so I mean, I, I think the idea, and I think it's important for the public, is looking at, you know, what the theory was when these maps were drawn ten years ago. I know Supervisor Glover and I were on the board at that time. Um, you know, not a perfect map, needs adjustments, and I think that can happen in, in, in this redistricting. If you think about the county, West Contra Costa County, I've grown up here, uh, lived here most of my life, um, is, is a, has always been considered a community of interest, right? It's, and, and that area from Kensington El Streeto through Pinole is all in the West Contra Costa Unified School District. Um, you know, it, the district does include a little bit of Hercules as well. Hercules is split between two districts. Um, although the population, it looks like, doesn't warrant District One picking up uh more of Pinole. It would, it would end up splitting Hercules, which folks really don't want to do. Um, and then you've got this industrial waterfront district, right? Going Hercules, Crockett, Martinez, Baypoint, Pittsburgh, and that industrial uh waterfront of Antioch. You've got a, a common interest of, upside of that industrial waterfront. You have East County, right? Oakley, Antioch, Brentwood, Discovery Bay, those communities um with all similar interests, agriculture in the east, um, and those suburbs in the east. You have a San Ramon Valley, Lafayette, Maraga, Arinda, La Merinda. La Merinda clearly is a community of interest. Um, so is the San Ramon Valley. Obviously Walnut Creek is sort of split because population in order to balance it out. So, and folks, in fact, um, uh, Candace, I know that, that La Merinda, San Ramon Valley is in the, is in the uh, a transportation SWAT, I think it is, right? If that, so the Transportation Authority, um, in, in fact, in a way, this is not unlike how the transportation commissions in this county are divided up for communities of interest on transportation. You have WIC-TAC, which is the West Contra Costa Transportation Advisory Committee out in West County. You've got an East, you have a Central, you have the Southwest. So, and then of course, Central County. So I think that, that is the main reasoning here. Um, and, and I think has been a sensible map. We haven't had really any complaint, major complaints. The biggest complaints were people in Camino Tassahara, Blackhawk, being in District Three, right? And that was done to give District Three enough population. Moving it into District Two clearly makes more sense. Um, and um, and the, the split in Pinole, and then there's the split in Antioch. So it, it, I just wanted to sort of highlight those features. Um, and um, and, you know, more than ten years ago, District Two went from Hercules to Crockett to Martinez down through Lafayette, Maraga, Arinda.
Yeah.
Right? Central County, West County, South County. District Three went from, I think it was Brentwood, down through the San Ramon Valley and up into Walnut Creek. Um, and it was, these, these had just existed for, for several decades. And I, so the big lift came ten years ago and really trying to create, you know, west, central, east, southwest, and then the northern waterfront. Um, so I haven't heard, frankly, many, um, any kind of overwhelming desire to shift those basic boundaries. It's more about how to do the adjustments to balance population and, and look, and fix any of the, the smaller boundary adjustments between the districts. So I just thought I would add that context.
Thank you, John. Karen?
Um, Chris, I, I, I've looked at these maps and looked at these maps. Are any of them, I can't tell, is Walnut Creek split in any of them?
Walnut Creek is split in all of them except the first one. The first, the first map, uh, map one here, it includes a whole Walnut Creek completely. But every other map uh splits Walnut Creek in the same way uh based, basically on the freeway here of Highway twenty-four and then Inter- Interstate six eighty.
Which is great, because I know the colors of the districts and the darker areas are the incorporated, well, I think they're, whatever.
You're right.
You can't tell. So maybe in the future, and I know the yellow uh squiggle lines are the current districts sort of overlaid. Um, I don't know how you do it, but I think it's, it would be helpful to show city outlines. I don't know if that's a, I don't know how you do it, but, but it would be, because I'm seeing, okay, look in District Three, Brentwood is one color, Oakley is another. But in my district, it's hard to tell, well, Pleasant Hill, Concord, it's just, is that, well, I'm not gonna make you do more work. Well, the answer to the question, that's enough.
Yeah, it, it, it's, it's complicated right there in the middle, and with all those unincorporated pockets, it, it really uh sure does make it hard to make that readable.
Well, I've, I've got it on my other computer and I, I can blow it up. Uh, my preference is five and then three. Um, I agree, the airport, I, I know that Supervisor Glover would like that for the northern waterfront, but um Concord's gonna have to be split, and I can, I can defend the, the splits, but they identify with Buchanan and um, uh, that is one thing that, that they will want. Plus, the actual call letters for the airport, I believe, are CCR. Not Creedence Clearwater Revival, but Concord something, whatever. Um, I'm happy, uh, you know, in, in, in concept map five, I don't have, District Four doesn't have as much of Morgan Territory as it does in District, in map three. Um, the problem with map three is uh when you talk about communities of interest, um, I can see splitting Concord along Highway Four or at the two forty-two, but coming down to Bonifacio uh and Concord Avenue, that cuts right into the downtown of Concord. And so um, that is not gonna be acceptable. Um, I'm sorry, I'm looking at just at concept map four. Uh, let me get back to three. Here we go. Um, that split is more, uh, it, it's not splitting neighborhoods, and it, it keeps the downtown in District Four, which uh I know Concord, as I said, is, is a, uh, if you consider a downtown, it, it is a community of interest. So again, um, map three uh would be my preference, but map, pardon me, map five would be my preference. But map three is also um, works well for District Four constituents.
Thank you, Karen. Candace?
Yes, and I was gonna say, you know, to me, my highest priority, as most of you are aware, really was um, having the whole San Ramon Valley brought in and keeping La Merinda whole, and we've been able to accomplish that. And I, I actually love representing Walnut Creek with Karen. I, I'm delighted to continue representing them. I was also happy, if that was their preference, to, you know, have it all be in District Four. But I know when we looked at it at map one, it made it a little bit more challenging to address some of the other needs throughout the county. Uh, as I told David, um, Twa, when we met and looked at each of these, I really can live, I'd be quite happy with all of them, and it really, to me, would just be, you know, taking a little bit deeper dive on the periphery of some of the districts um that are outlined for me just to see if there are ways that we can make sure a school district is whole. Because I think those are my primary goals, but certainly I'm very happy with the direction we're going. And, and I think, you know, with, with Concord, it's interesting to divide it. And I had asked David about this, whether or not we have the ability to even look at what their districts were, whether we're splitting a district within Concord. And I think David opined that probably we shouldn't worry about that. That might be too political to start worrying about Concord's district. But that's just something to put out there, whether or not a district within a city constitutes a community of interest that we should also be looking at.
Thank you, Candace. Federal?
Um, my, I'm interested in map one. And um, yeah, again, um, I'm very interested in that particular one. And, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm willing to, to look at the other maps and have some discussions with individual supervisors, whether there's a split. whether there's a split.
Alrighty, Karen, you have your hand raised again?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Okay. My my preferred map is Map Three. And I've already kind of discussed some of the things that I I'm interested in. I I do believe the Morgan Territory community, their schools are connected with Clayton. They shop in Clayton. They contact their Clayton City Council members to reach out to me about things. So I would I would like to see that community connected. It's similar to the San Ramon Valley. And so whoever's got Clayton, I think that's that community should go there. And tho- those are my comments. So, Mr. Twa, did you get enough feedback from us?
Madam Chair, yes, thank you very much. We'll digest all this information, see if we can make some modifications around the edges. As I think several of the supervisors have said, to make sure that school districts are kept in terms of their communities of interest in the appropriate place. And we will use this as we go forward now with the workshops that will start on Saturday.
All right, so I'm gonna close the public.
I had one other comment, Diane, sorry.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, just as an area, you know, I I used to be on East Bay Mud boards. I'm pretty familiar with also the East Bay Mud watershed lands. And while there's not much population to be affected, I think to to planning staff, I just want to look closer and I'll try to look at this. The boundary between District One and Five out in Briones Valley. You know, we to try to at least, again, it's not gonna affect many pop much population, but there's a roadway there, there's or is that, is that the actually, the boundary is where the yellow line was, I think, David? Was that the boundary at one time?
Some of it's in from District Two, John, because I have a little bit corner Briones.
Yeah, no, you do. I'm looking, you see up where it said the word Briones is the yellow line right there. Was that, is that the existing boundary, David? Why why was it brought in? I I mean, looking at geographic contours and geography watershed area makes sense. I I'll have to do a deeper dive and look at that portion. Why did you bring it in, I'm wondering?
I I I will tell you, so this area here between the the old line was on Bear, is that Bear Valley Road or Bear Creek Road?
Bear Creek Road.
Bear Creek Road. That was the old boundary and this boundary just contains, so this basically there, this is part of the community Briones. And so this just brings this in, that the the watershed lands kind of starts at the bottom of this black line here.
Right.
Is where that, so thi- this is kind of more of a rural area that is connected with the community of Briones.
Got it. So so that area is is more of a community of interest with the, on the other side of the road, and that's why you've done that.
That's right.
Okay, yeah. All right, I may take a look at that. All right, thanks.
Alrighty, anymore? No? Okay, so I'm gonna close the public hearing. And is there something that we need to vote on?
Yes, Chair Burgess, there are a number of recommendations specifically to Mr. Twa with regard to the conduct of the next steps. So you've opened the public hearing and received the report. And the motion could be to accept the item, and that's accepting the report from David Twa. And then giving him the corrections.
Madam Chair and Madam Counsel, I'll go ahead and move the the four recommendations in the board order.
Second, second.
Alrighty, so I'll bring this over to Jamie to do a roll call vote.
District One?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Twa, and thank you, Chris and Christine, even though we didn't see you. Alrighty, we are gonna get back on track for what we were doing before. We went to closed session and then came back here. We are now to Item D four, I believe.
Excuse me, Chair Burgess?
Yeah, yes.
I'm wondering if we might take D ten, which has the board making decisions about repeal of the current redistrict ordinance? And also whether you would adopt the new action by ordinance or resolution.
All right, let's do that. So since you did that great introduction, Mary Ann, I'm gonna let you keep going with this.
All right, thank you very much. So tonight, the board would be asked to take two actions. The first is to introduce Ordinance twenty twenty-one dash thirty-five. This would repeal Article twenty-four dash two point two of the county code, waive first reading, and fix November ninth for ordinance adoption. If this ordinance were ultimately adopted, then the existing boundaries of the supervisory districts would be repealed. This is something that has to happen in any event so that you can do redistricting. This ordinance would take effect thirty days after adoption. So if it were adopted on November ninth, then the new ordinance would be effective December ninth. However, to ensure a seamless transition of districting from the time that the ordinance is effectively repealed and the board's new action takes effect, we would say that Ordinance twenty twenty-one dash thirty-five does not become operative until the board's action to adopt new district boundaries is operative. So both actions would be operative on the same day, and that would give us a seamless transition. And it it looks like, based on the current schedule, that that day is most likely December twenty-third. The second action that the board is asked to consider is to adopt its new supervisory district boundaries by resolution rather than by ordinance. Previously, the Elections Code only permitted the board to adopt its districts by ordinance. However, this year SB five ninety-four, which was urgency legislation that took effect immediately, amended Elections Code Section twenty-one five hundred to permit the board to adopt new districts by either ordinance or resolution. In addition, SB five ninety-four clarified that the board satisfies the requirement to adopt new boundaries on the day that the ordinance or resolution is adopted, not on the day that the ordinance or resolution takes effect. I know this is highly technical, but if you were to pass a resolution on November twenty-third, you would have met your December fifteenth deadline of adopting the new boundaries just by the date on which you adopt the resolution. The advantage of a resolution is that the action is complete in a single meeting as opposed to an ordinance which takes two meetings. So by using a resolution, you can actually push that adoption date a little further out in the process, say till the twenty-third of November, which allows time for more public input as you get to that point. So we would anticipate that the board would adopt a resolution on November twenty-third with selection of the final map. And our recommendation is that you do go with a resolution rather than with an ordinance for this redistricting. So if there are any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Do my colleagues have any questions? Comments? All right, I'm gonna ask Jamie if there are any public comments on this item.
If there are any callers on the line or any Zoom participants who would like to speak on Ordinance Number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-five, please press pound two if you're on the phone or raise your hand in the Zoom app. We have no callers. We do have a Zoom participant.
Super. All right, I'll take over from here. We have one public comment from Adria Orr. Adria, you're gonna receive an invitation to become a panelist. Please accept that invitation and join us. And all you need to do is unmute yourself and you can share your video if you like. Welcome, Adria.
Hi, thank you so much. My name is Adria Orr. I am calling on behalf of Asian Americans Advancing Justice Asian Law Caucus. I just had a quick question, and I apologize, it may may be not directly pertinent to this agenda item. So I understand if it can't be addressed, it was, but in reference to redistricting, I was just hoping for some additional clarity on how feedback will be processed and shared in between now and the November ninth hearing. Since it sounds like that's when you're hoping to kind of give final line drawing instructions for maps to be approved on the twenty-third. I just was a little bit unclear on sort of like how, aside from the the feedback being posted on the website, sort of what the process looked like for kind of sharing and digesting it. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Adria. Mary Ann, do you want to answer that?
Actually, I'm going to ask David to answer that question.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Basically, keep in mind that that there there will be six workshops starting this coming Saturday, and all of those are posted online as and people can participate in those. We'll have plenty of opportunity for people to add their comments or concerns or issues into the the direction over the next six workshops that'll be held. Plus, by going to our online site, any information, any maps that we put together will be posted on that website. And we will be pushing the information out to anybody who has subscribed to our our redistricting process, as well as, of course, opportunities for people to add their own maps. All of that will be encompassed, much like it has for this one. We had four attachments to this board order, each of which contained significant information, both from public comment as well as public drawn maps and other things. So we think there's plenty of opportunities for people to participate and also to be aware of exactly what the process is and and what's going on. Again, the goal would be to to get direction from the board at the November ninth meeting as to what a final map would look like, but the final map would not come to the board until the November twenty-third date.
Thank you, Mr. Twa. All right, bringing it back to Ordinance Number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-five. Do I have a motion?
And could I ask? Thank you.
Oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say, could I ask that the motion included both introducing the ordinance, waiving the reading, and fixing November ninth for adoption and in addition determining that the board intends to consider a resolution to establish supervisory districts following the twenty twenty census.
So move, and I will second with those amendments.
Thank you. And so I'll bring it to Jamie to do a roll call vote.
District One?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes. All right, now I think I can take.